Good evening. The June 25th meeting of Longview City Council is now called to order. As you can see, things look a little bit different from when we last met in these chambers. We have brought an additional desk to allow the council and staff to maintain social distancing and have limited the number of available seats for residents. All this is designed to help us to do the work of the city face-to-face while limiting exposure to COVID-19. This meeting is broadcast on City View Municipal Television and through Facebook for those unable to attend in person. I want to thank the residents of Longview for their understanding during these last few months as we've talked in our meetings via teleconference. We're doing the best we can to bring you the information that you need in the safest, most possible way for all of us involved and all of you as residents as well. As you know, it's been our practice to invite guests, including local ministers and area youth, to help lead our invocation and pledge of allegiance, but in an effort to limit the number of people needed to conduct the city council meeting now that we are once again meeting in person, I've asked members of city council to lead us until further notice. So tonight, our invocation will be led by Ms. Nottie. Please rise.
Go ahead, please, by your head. By God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this moment, and we thank you for this hour, dear God. Dear God, we come tonight, this evening, dear God, praying for a blessing upon our city, dear God. We pray and ask, dear God, that you would just lead us in the right direction, dear God. We thank you, dear God, for everything that you have done within our city and everything that you're going to do. We pray and ask, dear God, that we can continue to be a beacon of light, dear God, for others to follow. Dear God, we give you all the praise and all the glory. We thank you and ask that you will bless each and every council member and their families, dear God. Bless those, dear God, who have been stricken with the disease of COVID, dear God. We pray and ask for their recovery. Lord God, we just thank you for all that you have done. This we ask in your Son's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Tonight is with great privilege, even though it's unusual circumstances, to have our mayor recipients of our scholarship with us tonight to read and present their scholarship applications. Once again, I was overwhelmed and blown away with the magnitude of the essays that were submitted. Reading them is just a joy to me. I literally read them and I just smile because I look at our youth and I think how wonderful their hearts are, where their minds are at this point in their lives, and I just am so thankful that our education system allows the education that's taking place right now within all of our school districts to educate these young people and put them into the workforce and to further their education wherever they may be going. But the applications are once again just inspiring is the best word I can put to it. It's just an inspiring time to get to read these. I wish you all could read every one of them because it's the hardest thing I do every year is to pick a winner because there are so many, many great applications, but I think you all will agree after you hear these young ladies and young men read their essays tonight that you'll see that we made some good choices. So I'm excited about this, so please give your attention. We will start with Ms. Bethany Rogers from Hallsville.
Hello. Longview, Texas is an incredible city with tons of beautiful and underrated parks and trails that my mother and I have been running since I was 10 years old. As a frequent jogger of these trails, I've come to see the natural beauty that our city has to offer, and the extension of the trail system recently has meant a lot to me. If I were the mayor of Longview, I would focus heavily on spreading awareness about these wonderful trails and parks by hosting community-wide events there to draw the Longview community not only closer to one another, but also to the scenery that's offered. Imagine a live concert and food trucks at Hinsley Park, or a barbecue and hammock gathering at Lois Jackson Park. Hosting weekend events at these locations would cause more people to frequent these parks and trails, therefore increasing awareness and community spirit. Another way for the citizens of Longview to feel more connected is to open up sections of trails to voluntarily be cleaned up regularly by service organizations, kind of like the Adopt a Highway system. This would make those serving the community feel a deeper connection to the nature and city of Longview. I'm a proud Longview citizen and I'm honored to live behind the Pine Curtain. And if I were the mayor, I would find much joy in seeing my amazing community rally around the pre-existing beauty of this wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a little bit different tonight. Usually I will present you with your certificate and we'll take a picture, but we'll do all that in a minute in a little bit different format, okay? So we'll just read the essays and we'll go through our picture-taking and our celebration, okay? So just bear with me. I know it's strange, but we're going to get through this, okay? Next, we have Ashton Jones of Longview.
Hello. Due to the fact that crime is prevalent in Longview, my primary focus would be bringing the community together and placing an immense amount of emphasis on our youth. Change starts from the younger generation up, and it is time that the course of Longview redirects to a more positive direction. As the mayor of Longview, I will host community-wide events like food drives, rallies to prevent the venom of Longview, and programs to defeat the stereotype of Longview being dangerous. Longview has birthed professional athletes, world-renowned actors and actresses, and fashion moguls, and I believe that so much potential lies within the crevices of Longview that we have managed to overlook. Instead of simply applauding their successes when they appear in the media, I would like to have a place where these talents can be discovered on a larger local scale. Whether it's opening up a place downtown for a youth center, or having night-out events where parents can bring their children to take a hiatus from struggles at home or work, I feel that making Longview a close-knit community will impact our futures greatly. There is so much that each one of us isn't aware about our neighbors that this is something that I found very significant. Fortunately, the COVID-19 pandemic has allowed families and neighbors to bond more and opened an avenue to propose change in Longview in its entirety. In society today, it can be argued that our generation has evolved to comply with ideology associated with individualism. Personal thoughts, opinions, selfishness, and well-being has caused a social retaliation from considering others before ourselves, and it is time to create a change. The mutual exchange of gratitude and grace that is transferred between yourself and someone else defines what a community is and what it should be regularly. The youth in Longview and these sexes as a whole are capable of so much more than we think, and I feel that if they were granted the tools to expand their talents and horizons, then we will all be astonished about the talents they are blessed with. Bettering the community also means treating strangers like family, caring for the elderly, expressing gratitude to others and their successes, being supportive in your neighbor's obstacles, and prioritizing those around you more than yourself. As a community, socialization should be defined as more than a group of individuals in the same area and being one another as a team. A community is togetherness, taking initiative, adding others without the expectation of gaining something for yourself, and most importantly, always making an effort to learn from those around you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give Sean a second to clean. Thank you, Sean. Next, we have Camden Solster from Pine Tree.
Hello. I realize that being mayor is a difficult job. If I were mayor of Longview, my primary focus would be on revitalizing and restoring buildings and areas in great need. It is important for Longview to create an environment that will draw in young families and new businesses for a healthy future. Many local buildings and areas need a fresh new start. Revitalization would repurpose land in an already landlocked area to build businesses that will draw on these families and restore renewed pride in our city. I plan on attending LaTerno University this fall. Traveling from I-20 to LaTerno, you can see the desperate need for restoration and reimagining in that corridor. We want to draw students to our college and hopefully keep them in Longview after graduation to help use their knowledge to better our city. The problem is that the area surrounding LaTerno is not very welcoming and needs a lot of revitalization. Abandoned buildings and gas stations lessen the area's appeal. We need to collaborate on a solution that will benefit Longview financially and aesthetically. A considerable amount of unused land exists around the I-20 Estes Parkway intersection. This would be a great location to clean up the area and have something like a Buc-Ee's use a portion of that land. We want to draw in visitors, drivers from the freeway, and college prospects in a way that makes them feel safe while providing for their needs that they might have, such as gas, shopping, food, and snacks, so that our community gains financially and beautification results. The closest Buc-Ee's to Longview is in Terrell, 90 minutes away. Our proximity to Shreveport would encourage Louisiana residents to come out and visit Longview, with the closest Buc-Ee's to Shreveport being over two hours away. The presence of a Buc-Ee's in Longview would boost the economy of that area and encourage other restaurants and businesses to build on the remaining unused land and fix up all of the old buildings. A business like Buc-Ee's would bring jobs to that area and pay well. They have great pay and benefits and require positive customer service. This would not only be a reflection of Buc-Ee's, but also of Longview. How great would it be if people drove by and noticed a business like this in Longview so visible from a major freeway drawing them into our city? We want to bring renovations that leave visitors to Longview impressed and wanting to return. This concept would not be too different than what is currently being done with the old REO Palm Isle Building not too far away, an excellent idea to help provide a need for our community while fixing up buildings and areas that need the help. This type of revitalization concept reinforces safety and provides for the entertainment needs of Longview. Thank you for this opportunity for a scholarship that will help provide for my financial needs to attend locally in Longview at LaTerno University. Thank you.
And next, we have Colin Castleberry from Spring Hill.
Hi. Taking on the responsibilities of mayor would be extremely large shoes to fill, especially in the midst of the coronavirus pandemic. Not only is the mayor the face of the city, he must oversee city personnel, connect with state and federal government, and let's not forget the all-too-important task of addressing unexpected crises. Unfortunately, this is all too familiar right now. The mayor must keep the city well-informed, which is no easy task, and manage a very fine line between informing the public in a way that maintains civilian awareness but limits panic, but also does not downplay the severity of the situation. At this unprecedented and tragic time, it is extremely important for everyone globally to come together and fight this virus as a unified body. I would love to write about my plans as mayor to drive economic prosperity within our community and increase jobs. As mayor, I will be well-informed of the stimulus plan and how to best help Longview employers survive this catastrophic event. However, during this health crisis, I feel as though that this should be the primary issue and needs to be fully addressed with total focus. If I were to become mayor during these unfortunate circumstances, first and foremost, I would keep the public fully aware with up-to-date information regarding the pandemic. It would be of utmost importance to educate the people of Longview that the coronavirus is a disease that attacks the respiratory system, while making sure that all of the facts were present, from the target age ranges to the effects of pre-existing conditions and ways to control the virus. A major contribution in the efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19 will simply to have every citizen know the exact statistics of the disease. As the numbers rise, the public needs to know that the shelter in place is not a recommendation. It is a mandatory and necessary to protect the entire community, old and young alike. Enforcing ideas that are already in place will make sure that the whole community is on the exact same page. My next priority would be to launch an anti-vaping campaign. In what appears to be the peak of COVID-19, now more than ever would be the time to educate and enforce the anti-vape movement, which is a serious concern during normal times, but most likely is a deadly concern during this pandemic. According to the CDC, the Central for Disease Control, vaping is extremely dangerous and has resulted in a volley, which is an e-cigarette or vaping use lung injury. Little is known about vaping, but findings that are emerging are alarming. However, the coronavirus is bringing a great deal of evidence to the forefront. Information on the adverse effects for users, young and old, is growing at staggering amounts. Elderly people are at much greater risk, but youth is no guarantee that the virus will not be life-threatening to them as well. The CDC goes on to say that these older people who suffer from health conditions, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, chronic respiratory disease, and cancer have much increased risk. Since vaping has already resulted in a volley, it is evident that these lung-related injuries are going to make it extremely difficult for coronavirus patients to recover regardless of age. What exactly does this mean for youth? For this reason, I would create a social media campaign to confront and hopefully greatly lessen the epidemic of vaping. COVID-19 has instilled a lot of fear, and this could be used to reduce the widespread use of this extremely detrimental addiction. Together, unified, and strong as a society, Longview could be a major contributor in the reduction of the COVID-19 threat, or at least support efforts of containment and prevention from further spreading. As mayor, my campaign efforts are directed towards the ultimate end goal of a well-informed, unified city that is interested in the common good. This will ensure a better Longview now and in the future. Longview will remain unified during this troubling and stressful time, setting the precedent for future generations. We will work together towards the common goal of surviving this pandemic and learning from it. Thank you.
I don't know about y'all, but listen to them know what they should do as a mayor. They should be sitting up here, not me. There is really not a need for me to be here right now. Y'all can step in, you have great ideas, great presentation, and you know, when I go through these applications, as we get many of them in every year, I never know, I always take the face sheet off. I don't know who's written the application when I read the essays because I don't want to have any bias. And boy, didn't I pick some beautiful people? There's some beautiful children. Y'all are awesome, well-spoken, well-educated, and I'm so thrilled that you all took the time to do the essays. It also is very encouraging, like I say, to see the way you're thinking at your age. I know I didn't think that well at your age, and I'm proud to see that you all are, and so it's very, very encouraging. I think Longview has a very bright future with what I see each year with these essays coming in, and I'm extremely excited about that. Okay, so here's what I want to do. This is unorthodox, but, okay, I'm going to present each one of you all with your certificates, okay? We've got to take some pictures because it's important. We hang these pictures in the back up here. Every year, I have a picture with each one of you all with the group, so we're going to do this, okay? We have little markers up here where you all are going to stand, okay? So what I want to do first, okay? Richard, you taking pictures?
Sir.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, one at a time, I want you to come up here and I want to do something. Can y'all hold your breath pretty good? Okay? Can each of y'all hold your breath for like maybe 20 seconds? Okay, because I want you to come up here, I'm going to get up here, I'm going to hand this to you, and we're going to take our masks off and hold your breath for 20 seconds and smile, okay? Because I don't want these masks in our pictures. It just doesn't work for me. So can y'all do that? Are y'all okay with that? Are your parents okay with you holding your breath for 20 minutes? I promise you, I, for 20 seconds. I do not have COVID virus. I precaution every day I have to in my business, but, so I want you to come up here if you don't mind, 20 seconds, take your mask off, get a picture, and you go back to your seat for a second, okay? Y'all good? Okay, Bethany, come on up for a second. And keep it on just until I tell you, okay? Keep it on. I want you to jump right over here. You get the whole bit, okay? All right. Great thing, we're holding, hold your breath? One, two, three, go. Okay, Ashton? Ready? No. Camden? Okay, I have to confess, I've known Camden since he was a little kid. I didn't know that when I read his essay, but when I saw his name, it's always fun to see that you, I recognize some of the people that wrote the essays after you read their name. So I'm very glad, I go, I expected more from that kid. That was their best effort. They just did that because they needed it. Are you ready, Camden?
Yeah.
Okay, go. Thank you. Okay, Colin? Ready?
Yes.
Clear. One more time. Now, I need all y'all four back up here again. You put your masks on for a second, and we're going to all stand here in your spots and we'll take our picture, okay? So y'all come up here and stand in your spots. It's going to be a different kind of picture. Those, I'm standing with everyone around me, but this is what it has to be this year. Can you see everybody, Richard?
Oh, yeah.
It's all good?
Yeah.
You sure? Okay, y'all, I'm going to count to three, y'all take your masks off. One, two, three, hold your breaths.
Six miles, six, five, six, seven, perfect. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much. I want to thank all the families, members that came today as well. I appreciate you all coming and participating, and I appreciate you all allowing your children to do this. It means a lot to me, and it means a lot to the council, and I know Mrs. Shahara, she donates her stipend as well to fund this campaign, and I really appreciate it. And like I say, it's an honor to be in the presence of you young men and women. It's a real honor for me and for this council, for City of Longview. Thank y'all very much. Y'all are awesome. Okay, now y'all got to go. Bye. Y'all have to leave the chambers. Oh, wait, 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 one minute. Sharonda Baker.
You all wait for me?
Sharonda is here. Sharonda Baker is here from Walmart every single year. This is the sweetest lady in the whole wide world. She has a gift certificate for each one of you all from Walmart for your scholarship recipients, so thank you, Sharonda. I want y'all to know, she does this on her own. Every year, she contacts me. Usually you have to beg and claw and plead to get somebody to do something for you. She contacts me every year and says, when your scholarship's coming out, I'm going to give you the gift certificates. I just can't tell you how much we appreciate you, Sharonda, and Walmart, y'all are awesome. Thank you so much. We're going to take a brief minute to let these scholarships, how are you?
All right.
Good to see you.
All right.
We'll take a brief minute, let them, let everybody leave, and then we'll have anyone in citizen comment that wishes to speak, the social distancing in the lobby, they can come to the podium, and we're going to sanitize between each of you to make sure everybody's taken care of. So if there are anyone out there, they can start coming in at this point in time. I don't have any speaker cards, so I'm assuming there are no citizen comments, so very well. We will proceed on to consent agenda. Are there any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Can you do a brief?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now to action item. Consider a resolution to publish and post availability of the draft of the 2020 Annual Consolidated Action Plan and Five-Year Consolidated Plan Documents with the CWG Grant and Home HOME Budgets. Dakota Brown, Community Development Administrator.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds, we are requesting that you consider a resolution to publish and post the availability of the draft of the 2020 Annual Consolidated Action Plan, Five-Year Consolidated Plan Documents, and proposed Community Development Block Grant and Home Budgets and Supporting Policy Documents to begin a HUD mandatory public comment period, and the recommendation is the passage of this resolution. And with that, we do have a mandatory public hearing that we would like to accept at this point in time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Are there any questions of Dakota? Any council members? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Out of the community interest, Mr. Moore.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Ms. Nottie. Mr. Wade.
I do have something, actually.
Please.
Last weekend, we celebrated Juneteenth, and before I begin, I want to acknowledge yourself, Mayor, for supporting this event happening and supporting me having it. Mr. Bonds, thank you very much, sir. And also to Mr. Karen with the Parks Department. It wasn't a city-sponsored event, but whenever I had questions or I needed help with anything, they were there to answer those questions. So first and foremost, thank you guys very much for that. Second, the event happened on Saturday. We had a great parade, and to start the day off, we had a solidarity march from Foster Middle School into the park, and during that time, I was honored to have Councilman Moore from District One to be there, and also Councilwoman Snotty from District Two. Thank you so much for coming out early that morning and supporting that. The day ended with food vendors. It was in the same vein as Juneteenth in years past, but yet, you know, with a little special flair just with everything that's been going on in our nation. We used the entire park, social distancing was in place, everyone wore masks, and it was a really, really big city event. And so thank you for everyone that contributed and showed up and made this day happen. Thank you so much.
Ray, I want to just take a minute to thank you for stepping up. I know that was a very part of this as well. You know, it's important that, you know, when sometimes things don't go the way we planned them to go with city events, just like the Fourth of July celebration, and then someone steps up and makes that happen, it's always wonderful to see, just like the Juneteenth event that had to be canceled, like many other events have been canceled in our community thus far, and then someone steps up and makes it happen. It's just, it shows who you are, it shows your character, and such a great, successful event, and I appreciate you being involved and you taking the time to do this and you having the fortitude to stick it out, Ray. I appreciate that. I celebrate Juneteenth every year. I mean, it's my birthday, man. I celebrate that thing every year. So it's wonderful to see, and I appreciate the invitation. I'm sorry I wasn't available. I was out of town from, actually, it was my birthday, and so I was out of town, but you know, it's just part of our community. It's part of our history, and you know, to continue to do things like that, I think are extremely important, and we, because we can never forget. That's the key. When we do forget, then we're forced to relive it again, and we won't want to do that, not here. So I appreciate you and the event, and the people that showed up and the support that you have, it's a great, great job all the way around.
Thank you very much. It was a team effort, and I had a group of people that helped out, and a lot of them, I haven't mentioned a lot, but there were a lot of people that contributed to make it all work, so thank you.
It's fun to see the city participating in events that affect us all.
Thanks, sir.
Mrs. Shahara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pertle?
Nothing.
Mr. Bonds?
I don't have a question.
Okay. We have free walk-up COVID-19 testing scheduled for July 30th, excuse me, June 30th to July the 7th, various locations in Longview, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. You can go to longviewtexas.gov/covid19 to get that information. We have Hooray for Heroes on July the 1st. This is an event being put on by Julie Woods and Associates for the police and fire in our community. The Hooray for Heroes is a drive-by application parade that will take place in Longview City Hall on July the 1st at 5:30 p.m. during a time when law enforcement had had to step up their activities in COVID-19. This is a community's chance to thank them. Y'all probably don't understand, know this, but I didn't, I mean, I know it, but I don't, it doesn't always register, but you know, our Longview Fire Department has tested over 685 inmates in the Grand Canyon Jail and over 2,389 nursing home residents. That's over 3,000 people just in two entities, jail and nursing homes in our community. You all realize when they go out and they test these individuals, they're putting themselves at risk and their families at risk, and we need to remember that. And you know, it's, and that's just two entities, you know, all the drive-up testing, all the things they have to do, going to houses, people that are sick, they've really stepped it up, and of course, our local Longview Police Department has continued to serve and protect us as essential employees, additionally serving and protecting protesters and even taking them water bottles, you know? We're a community of givers in our, in our public service, and I appreciate that, and so this event is to honor them. So I'm going to challenge each of you council members to get your districts out and have them represented and have them drive through and say thank you to our police and fire because they need our support and they deserve our support, and I appreciate that taking place. City office will be closed July the 3rd. Our drive-in fireworks will be on July the 4th. We're excited about that. Let's see our, and that's, that's once again sponsored by Juicy's T Blancos and Juicy's Tacos.[1700.36] You all realize when they go out and they test these individuals, they're putting themselves at risk and their families at risk, and we need to remember that, and you know, it's, and that's just two entities, you know, all the drive-up testing, all the things they have to do, going to houses, people that are sick, they've really stepped it up, and of course, our local Longview Police Department has continued to serve and protect us as essential employees, additionally serving and protecting protesters and even taking them water bottles, you know? We're a community of givers in our, in our public service, and I appreciate that, and so this event is to honor them. So I'm going to challenge each of you council members to get your districts out and have them represented and have them drive through and say thank you to our police and fire because they need our support and they deserve our support, and I appreciate that, that taking place. City office will be closed July the 3rd. Our drive-in fireworks will be on July the 4th, we're excited about that. Let's see, our, and that's, that's once again sponsored by Juicy's T Blancos and Juicy's Tacos, they have been so good to step up and just take the reins on that. Our council meeting schedule is changing for July and August for the budget process. Our next meeting will be July the 16th. Is that correct? That is correct. Okay, so update on COVID-19. Let me, let me give you my latest report that I get every day. I'm sorry I don't have it pulled up yet, just one second. I have two reports to kind of give you. Our actual numbers today, we had eight more positives today, which brings our total positive cases in Longview to 244, our total recovery cases to 105, and our total fatalities remain at 13. So we had eight positives, no recovered, and no fatalities today reported. Let me explain something to you while I have a chance. You all understand that there's some misconceptions or it's hard to, this is confusing to a lot of people, but when we have, when we have 244 positives, what that means is that's 244 people that have tested positive by lab confirmation for the virus, not that have symptoms that are sitting at home, these are positive lab tests. We have 105 recovered cases. Those are people that have actually come back and taken a second test or even a third test and gotten a negative result showing that they have been recovered. Now, the 244 represents all positives. We don't subtract the recovered off of that, so we don't have 105 more on that. 244 is the total number of positives that we've had in Longview since this started, and 105 reported recoveries. Now, understand this, not everyone that has a positive result comes back and gets their another test to see if they're negative. So it's not unusual that our recoveries will be lagging behind the positives because people get to feeling better, they go home, they go back to work, and they don't go back and get a second test to know that they have, that they're negative again, but they're back at work and they're cleared to go back, and so that's considered a recovery, but it's not a recovery we can report unless they come back and have a lab-reported recovery. So understand that, that's the way the system works, and that's the best numbering that I can give you at this point in time. The second thing, you know, these numbers, they continue to rise, and I get that, and they're going to continue to rise. Texas, it is an overwhelming rate of positive tests on a daily basis now, and I wish it wasn't the case, but it is the case, and so we have to realize that with more testing being done, we'll have more positives. With more socializing being done, we're going to have more positives. As things have opened up, we're having more positives, and that's just, that's just the way it is, and so we have to expect that and realize that that's going to take place. But what's more significant to me is not so much the positives, it's the hospital utilization. That's where we, that's where we're going to have our concern, that's where the level of panic comes in, and as long as we maintain a capacity where we can continue to serve those in need in our hospital beds and ICUs and ventilators, then we're okay. But when we run out of that capacity, that's when it becomes critical, and that's what I think Governor Abbott is seeing in certain areas where he has begun to shut things back down a little bit, in certain counties, the four biggest counties in the state. I think today he said that he's shutting some things back down, elective cases and things, and it's because as these positives are rising, so are the hospitalizations, and when the hospitalization utilization goes up, then that's when the critical need assessment has to take place, so I think that's what he's looking at. I think fortunately in Longview, we're still doing pretty good. According to the numbers that I have, and I don't, once again, I can't tell you that these are perfect numbers, but these are numbers that I get on a daily basis. We have 15, 15 hospital cases of confirmed COVID-19 in our hospitals. We have a lot more that are in the hospital that are not confirmed but suspected, so it's hard to determine, to me, a confirmed and a suspected, as long as you're taking up a hospital bed, it's the same thing, they're still utilizing a hospital bed. So understand that that's something that we have to be concerned about in our community. When our hospital utilization gets critical, we have to start wondering what we're going to do and make different plans, but for now, we're okay. Our hospitals are assuring us every day that they have capacity for our needs, and that's the most important thing, so the numbers will continue to go up, we have to be vigilant, and I appreciate more than you all ever know how much I appreciate city staff for arranging us to be here today, even though I don't like being here in these circumstances because I still am very phobic of this. But thank you for those that came in. We cannot require you to wear a mask, but we strongly urge you to wear a mask, and everybody wore a mask today, and I appreciate that. I think that's just responsibility for your, for your citizens, your fellow citizens and your families, so thank you to city staff, you did a great job of arranging council chambers and doing things to keep us as safe as possible as we can, so continue to do what you feel is necessary to keep you and your family safe. Wash your hands, social distance, wear a mask if you feel the need, and hopefully this will, this too shall pass. So thank you all, and until our next meeting, God bless you all. We're adjourned.